We have a pleasure to have a really astonishing panel of speakers. Really thank them for coming and I think all the papers blend together very nicely. So we have a lot of material to cover and very little time, so let's start right away with Naba. Actually, you are the first one. Thank you.
I forgot to say, the questions will be at the end. I would allow two questions after each presentation. And you have 22 minutes.
So it's a pleasure to be here. Let me turn on my... is my mic on? I think it's on. Great, it's a pleasure to be here to present this paper, which is really motivated by actually what motivates this entire panel. So it's very nice to be with everyone on this panel. Obviously, governments around the world are looking for ways to think about improving the delivery of public services. A lot of the research in this area of improving public services delivery has focused, a lot of it by people on this panel, has focused on incentives on the job. How to improve those and improve sort of performance while people are on the job. But when you look at the literature on, for example, in education, on the importance of individual fixed effects and the composition of the workforce that sometimes can't be where similar people perform very, very differently, it makes you think about the selection margin and how incredibly important that can be. And so what we do in this paper is to identify and measure the importance of selection on the effectiveness of public service delivery in the field of health. And so, you know, choosing the right people can be really important. The question is who would be the right people to deliver public services, for example, in health? On the one hand, you can think of the standard things that we care about, you know, talent maybe broadly defined, both cognitive and non-cognitive skills that are some element of ability and some element of ambition, drive, grit. And then on the other hand, especially when you're thinking of remote areas, of community-based service delivery, you might care a lot about the motivation of the individuals, in particular their connection to the community, the trust that the community has for them, and what we might call sort of altogether pro-sociality. This is particularly important in the wide-ranging area around the world that finds it tremendously difficult to bring public services to remote areas. So this is not a problem just for developing countries. In the US, this is a tremendously difficult issue of how you incentivize people to go to the remote areas and provide those services. One solution that has been posed around the world is to recruit from those areas and upskill precisely because they'll have the connection to the community, they'll care about the community enough that they'll want to be there and they'll understand the needs of that community. So that has actually led to a large policy debate on thinking about these community-based agents who have traditionally been volunteers coming from the community and how they should be incentivized. If you want to professionalize them, should you provide them with a salary? And there's a very lively debate arguing that in fact you should provide as low of material rewards as possible so that you can screen for the people who are truly dedicated to the community. So you can already start to see the way in which these two dimensions could be in conflict with each other and considered in conflict certainly in the policy debate. Now, to be able to actually answer what dimensions are truly important for the delivery of public services and, you know, whether there is this tension in reality, one has to be able to isolate the effect of selection and then to be able to measure not only the particular dimensions within those individuals and not only their performance on the job, but ultimately the effectiveness of the work that they're doing on, in this case, health outcomes and health impact. And that's what we do in the paper. We take it all the way through for three years of data. What we do specifically is to test how career incentives or the particular form of extrinsic rewards we're using are the ones that the government had at play, which were career incentives, to be able to move up in the government, affect performance through sorting. This was a nationwide field experiment that the government of Zambia was doing in the introduction of essentially a proto-nurse. That was for the first time ever going to be recruited from communities in a decentralized way, looking precisely for people who are going to be connected to the community, but having them become part of the civil service and be able to access all of the benefits of the civil service, including the opportunity to grow. Now, obviously, the key challenge in any of the things where you want to look at the effect of incentives on recruitment is the ability to separate out the effect on selection of people from the effect of the incentives when people are on the job. The setting that we're in not only is ripe for thinking about this tension, but is particularly ripe for allowing us to separate out the effect of selection. And the way we do that is to sort of use this identification strategy in which we design this nationwide randomized experiment where in the first stage, we randomize across the country the recruitment strategy. And I'll tell you exactly what we did, but we emphasize different aspects of the job, different incentives for being on the job. And then, once people are recruited, they are trained together for a year and face all the same incentives while they're on the job. Then we follow them when they go back to their communities. We measure their performance on the job and then we measure the impact of that performance on the health of the communities. That allows us to separate the effect of selection that the incentives are providing from the effect on effort which everyone is faced because they all face the same incentives. Just to give you a quick, brief on the context in which we did this, it's actually very similar to many developing contexts where there's severe staff shortages. So in 2010, when we started this study, there were 12 million people, 646 doctors. They couldn't get the doctors to go out to the remote areas or the nurses themselves. And this gap is traditionally filled by these volunteer-type of informal community health workers. And that's the status quo. This was meant to formalize these positions, train them, and post them back to the communities. The main task of these new community health assistants, which was what the new role was called, is to visit households in remote areas. They have secondary tasks that are about having community mobilization meetings and seeing patients at the health post. So the question that the government in this case was facing was whether to use the career incentives as a recruitment tool. And in particular, the director of HR said, you know, what's going to happen to these individuals once they are connected to the government? Will they lose their connection to the community? That's the tension we're exploring. Just to say that most priors of the government was that these guys shouldn't be part of the civil service. They shouldn't be given these types of benefits precisely because it would bring in the wrong kind of person. This was done in the first phase of the Community Health Assistance Program. So 165 communities in 47 districts. Two community health assistants were selected from each district. We experimentally varied the salience of the career benefits. So I'm going to show you, this is by virtue of two recruitment posters. This was the only way that people learned about the job and the way that the job was advertised. Each of the treatment group and the control group received these basically boxes of posters and were put up in the district. To give a little bit more detail on the posters themselves, the control poster was advertising essentially what is the status quo for how these positions are advertised. These are traditionally kind of informal health workers, community-based, and the pitch was, you know, help your community, serve your community, become a community health worker. Everything else in terms of the guidelines and the application requirements remain the same. In contrast, the treatment condition introduces these material rewards and these extrinsic rewards and emphasizes the opportunity to become a highly-trained member of Zambia's healthcare system, interact with experts in the medical field, and access future career opportunities, including clinical officer, nurse, and environmental health technologist. And so this was, these are two basically making the same job, varying the salience of the benefits of the job, in particular varying the salience of material rewards versus the standard way of just getting people dedicated to the community. And then, all people were brought in and trained for an entire year together, told about the job and the incentives on the job, faced that all together, and then went back to their communities. Just to say that we have 48 districts, so that's not usually a very large sample size. But we're facing very, very, very similar. You know, the randomization was, luckily, everything worked out very nicely in terms of balance. And in particular, the one thing I kind of want to point out is that the same proportion of people who were unemployed or employed in agriculture is the same across treatment conditions. I mean, multiple other factors are also the same in both the districts and in the individuals who applied. But this is particularly important also because it speaks to a larger issue in terms of finding talent in remote areas for these types of services. And so, I mean, in particular, I don't know how well you can see that, but, you know, you've got not that many, 4% of people who are eligible in this population for applying. That means they have a grade 12 education and two O-levels. But the majority of their work is actually, I don't know if you can see that here, but is within agriculture. So essentially, you have very skilled people working in sort of underemployed areas. Okay, so now that's kind of, just to give you a sense of that, how the experimental design was taken out, the sort of most important thing is thinking about the performance itself. So as I mentioned, these are the two, three tasks. And we're going to look at this because I want to basically take every aspect possible of what we think of as performance because there's no way to answer the question of how important these various aspects could be in terms of the dimensions of the individual until we're really able to measure all of the aspects that they could have been helping to serve the community on. And to give you a sense, this is, these are very remote areas and roads are really bad, like many of the places that everyone here knows. We did the household visits through SMS monitoring, that is, real-time visit data that we received and that was audited for everyone. We also correlate it with administrative data that is collected by others, as well as household survey data. And so even though this initial measure I'm going to show you is self-reported, we find it very, very, lines up very nicely with both randomly chosen households' reports of visits through household surveys that we did and with institutional data. So that's just showing you that. But the sort of most important treatment effect here is that the career incentives attract agents who do 31% more visits. And this could be through a couple of different facets. It could be because it affects people with higher ability, which you'll see, is that 10 minutes? 10 minutes, great. Or, you know, it could affect the elasticity of effort, which is sort of, as you'll see in some of the characteristics, this kind of go-gettedness is a little bit what's driving it. But the key to take away here is that this is a very large effects on the first output measure of performance. You know, most incentive effects find an effect around 20%. We're finding an effect of 30% on the extensive margin. If you scale this up, if we had put all of the 147 CHAs who were in the control group into the treatment group, that would have been 14,000 more household visits. Importantly, the household visits don't crowd out other activity that is not as perfectly or as sort of rigorously measured. So the number of community meetings that is measured through institutions and through the household surveys, the number of patients seen, all of those go up significantly. So for example, they do twice as many community mobilization meetings. It also is not a function of shirking on the time they spend or going and spending time with your friends or going to the closest households. They have the same retention rates as the others. They don't do shorter visits. They don't focus on easier-to-reach households. They're not less responsive to emergencies and they don't work shorter hours. So it very much looks like they're just essentially more efficient at doing the tasks that are laid out, all of the tasks that are laid out. Now, of course, you could still think maybe the people who were recruited through the community treatment had some connection to the community, some trust with the community, that even though they didn't spend more time, for example, in the household visits, they may have been able to find some other way to create the kind of health impact that would be important, that we care about. And so that's why we actually look at facility data using all of the institutional data from the Ministry of Health. And then we do a nationwide household survey to randomly survey households that were affected by these CHAs to see the impact on them. So the first thing we do is look at, their main task is to really think about mother and child health. They're supposed to encourage institutional deliveries. They're supposed to encourage being on time with vaccinations. This is our identification strategy where we do difference and difference because we're gathering data basically on a monthly level from all over the health clinics in the country and the health posts that the CHAs are at. So both their own health posts that they see patients at and the ones that they refer to, the health centers. And what we find is that institutional deliveries go up by 30%. Children's visits, the visits of children being brought in, go up by 24%. Children's weight goes up by 22%. Oleo vaccination goes up by 20%. And none of these are treatment and control areas different before the intervention. So not only were they doing the visits, but they were actually encouraging the kind of behavior that we can then see shows up in the clinics. We'll see this also when we see the household survey data of how the behavior change happened in the households themselves and got them to sort of show these outcomes. We then, as I mentioned, take sort of all the 47 communities in each of the 47 districts and we look at the youngest child under five. And we also ask the head of the household about these knowledge questions. Interestingly, in both the career and community CHA posters, they attracted people who were able to provide the same level of knowledge to the households. So households answered equivalently correctly on knowledge questions. But it was only the households that were served by the career CHAs where that actually turned into behavior change, in particular into breastfeeding, into the proper disposal of feces, et cetera. We also have, you know, the data on the sort of number of deworming treatments went up and we have the immunization cards. So, you know, if the child was on track with immunization, went up by 81%. So you can see that basically, and the other thing is we actually measured the children and the underweight went down by 25%. So in terms of impact, all the way down the line, the inputs that we can measure that these CHAs were putting in had a tremendous effect all down the line. Not only in the household visits, the community mobilization meetings, but in the actual use of the facilities in the things that the government particularly cared about in terms of women giving birth and children being seen and in the household impacts sort of of the household themselves. Then the natural question becomes, these guys are great. Can we just actually find a way to find them and just target those people, you know? And just, if we know what they do, then we can just find those the best people. And so we try to answer the question of could you mimic what we see through kind of this self-selection by looking at eligibility criteria on observables? And so let me tell you about the observables. The observables on some dimensions are different. So for example, the CHAs recruited by the career posters have a higher ability and skill level. They have higher career ambition, that is, they're more driven. They have the same level of pro-sociality and connection to the community as the ones that were recruited through the community treatments. But even if we put together all of our measures, which are a lot, but admittedly always are imperfect, we still find a substantial proportion that can't be explained. And that's very similar to a lot of the literature out there in terms of the variation that cannot be explained by any observables that we have in performance, which again suggests that the self-selection that's happening when people see these posters and are drawn to it is absolutely crucial. So what we learn is that the incentives that we hold for the jobs, the benefits of the jobs, are critical at the recruitment stage as well precisely because the selection of the type of people who come into the job can be so impactful in the delivery of public services. This is the first integrated evidence, we believe that there is, on the effect of selection on performance and effectiveness of public service delivery. And in particular, the benefits, the extrinsic sort of material rewards that have to do with career advancement. We're able to attract candidates that were able to perform better, a performance gap that can't be fully explained by observables and therefore can't be mimicked solely by trying to find the best people through some other form of selection. It also allays a little bit this concern that has been underlying and this argument that's been underlying the policy debate that these community-based agents should not be actually professionalized or given salaries or put onto payroll for the government because it's going to somehow draw in the wrong kind of person. And that by keeping salaries low or keeping any kind of extrinsic possibilities low for them, that they will actually be able to, you'll be able to find the people who are dedicated to the community. Now, of course, what's important to remember is that these are ultimately community-based positions in the sense that they are going to attract people who are going to be delivering services in the remote areas. So already, that's one level in which it's not going to be, you know, you're not going to attract the most selfish types. But this is the level on which much of the policy debate is actually happening. So we care about those particular people. The other thing is that even now, I mean, now it's been two years and there has been very, very little attrition and in particular, no differential attrition between these two types. So this fear that, you know, these guys would move on too quickly is not... But even if they do, I think the government has decided that this is worth it because in a way, they also see that not only, if they give two years, three years of really good service and then they're able to actually move on in a way that fills the other gaps in the public service, in the civil service, there is a possibility then of recruiting new people from those communities because there were so many of them who were kind of underutilized. And that in itself could have a very positive virtuous effect in terms of the use of human capital in the delivery of public services that in itself could create a kind of virtuous cycle.[1284.22][1287.22](Applause)
Do we have time for short questions?
I was just wondering what kind of career advancement they were expecting and whether or not it was some kind of zero-sum game and whether there was a risk that they may not all be able to progress and therefore create some discouragement?
Should I answer now or should we take another? Okay. I think, first of all, the career possibilities weren't for everyone. So it's not a benefit that's for everyone to advance, otherwise it wouldn't provide an incentive, right? And I think everybody knew that. The way that it actually works in the government, and it's in the Red Book for Civil Service, was that you get these in-service training opportunities that are where the government pays for you to actually go and get trained in a higher level. And that is determined by merit, although it's not very clear exactly on what measures that's going to be. It's done through the supervisors and the district. The critical thing was whether the CHAs then would be on civil service payroll or whether they would be their own. Because once they're on civil service payroll, which they are now, and this project has been scaled up, they are then subject to being able to benefit from the same benefits. What's happening now is that the government is, they have to actually figure out if, once the CHAs start applying for this opportunity, what's important is to figure out the best kind of path for them. Because on the one hand, they could become nurses, but there's also a lot of other training opportunities that are now arising, for example, in midwifery or even in assistance of C-sections, for example, that could provide this type of training in a hairline way. So that's all being sort of decided right now by the government. But the key is that they all receive this benefit. It was all in their Red Book of what it means to be a civil service.
The effect that you identify is all a self-selection effect because the government was not making any selection of the candidates, as I understand, right? So everyone who was showing up would enter the program?
So let me actually clarify because it was a shorter presentation, so I didn't talk too much about that. There was a selection panel at the district level, and then at the local level. And we do a whole section in the paper where we separate out self-selection from the selection panel. And actually, I mean, you can look in, and we have a large appendix on this, that basically all of the effect appears to be driven by self-selection. So that's why I call it sorting, just to make the difference clear. But yeah, but all of the selection panels were given the same.
Okay, so definitely look at that. And then what I was wondering was whether there was a difference in the numbers of people that were showing up under the two incentives?
So there wasn't actually a difference in the numbers. And that's interesting because on the one hand, you would think, well, career benefits are just better. So would you get more people to show up in the career benefits? But actually, it does suggest that people, if people understand that career benefits, for example, are only available to you if you're higher quality, so the expected value of those is different for every person, then you would maybe see the same number of people showing up and get the kind of distribution which we got, which was the same number of people showing up with a higher mean ability in the career treatment.[1507.62][1510.62](Applause)
Okay, thanks to Markus for the invitation. I hope you can hear? Yep? Okay, great. So let me get straight into the motivation as we don't have too much time. So I'm going to start off talking about local monitoring and the fact that local monitoring might have two purposes. So public sector organizations increasingly rely on reports from local monitors to provide information that's costly to verify. So to fix ideas, I'm going to talk about an education setting. And a local monitor in this context is going to be the head teacher of a school and they're going to be monitoring the behavior of teachers within a school. So when I say local monitor, I mean someone who's working within the organization. That's what we mean by local. And these kind of local monitoring schemes that are being introduced typically have two rationales. One is to provide incentives. So Nava was talking about incentives on the job. This is what we're talking about in this paper. One is to incentivize desired behavior and another is to provide information to someone else within the system, for instance, in the education context, the district education office. And that information can then be used for planning purposes. So to give you a non-education example that's prevalent in the UK, we have something called a Quality of Outcomes Framework. And here, UK GPs are rewarded with budgetary incentives and salary incentives indeed for locally collected and reported information, so their COFF scores. And the COFF data that's collected is then used to inform broader policy, whether that be on tax, for instance, sugar tax, that's in the news, public health campaigns, and investment more generally. So there's this notion that the information that's collected locally can be used in two ways. So the received wisdom here is, once you start attaching high stakes to local monitoring, you risk running into dangers or problems of collusion. So the idea here is the local monitor, in our setting, the head teacher, might collude with the teacher to try and get a share of the reward that might be on offer. Well, if this is true, then the paying for locally collected information, so that's what we mean by high stakes, actually attaching financial rewards to the monitoring reports might fail on both margins that I just mentioned. First, if the monitor and the agent collude, we may not incentivize the desired behavior, but moreover, we then run into the risk of not actually getting accurate information for planning purposes. So the information might be systematically biased. So there are a lot of examples of this actually happening. In the paper, we talk about examples from the US healthcare system. There are also famous examples in Indian schools and African schools and so forth. There's now a literature indeed that tries to caution against using local monitoring by removing human judgment. So you might be aware of the famous papers on cameras in schools. So rather than relying on humans to collect information, there was an intervention that introduced cameras that would timestamp whether a teacher was in the classroom to try and monitor using automated technology teacher performance. Punch cards within healthcare facilities, I believe. In India, they're about to introduce CCTV within public sector organizations. So there's been a lot of push towards moving away from human judgment towards more automated methods of collecting information. What we do in this paper, though, is try and suggest that there's another possibility. Yes, collusion could happen, but it's not the only thing. And the way to think about this is to think back to the coast theorem. So if performance is low, inefficiently low, then somehow the coast theorem must be failing, okay? We're not reaching an efficient outcome. There must be some bar- There must be some bargaining failure going on. Well, if that's the case, what are the transaction costs that are stopping the Coast theorem from working? And if you think about it, it could be that there's just a lack of transferable utility. The people that are interested in getting employees within public sector organizations to produce and to perform well are not able to incentivize them. Somehow, there's not enough transferable utility around. Well, in which case, if you start paying for locally monitored information, then you're introducing transferable utility. You're putting cash on the table. And that cash might actually help to overcome the bargaining failure. So theoretically at least, it's conceivable that locally monitored and paying for locally monitored performance could succeed on both margins. Okay? It could incentivize the desired behavior by correcting for this bargaining failure. And moreover, if we do see the incentivization taking place, we could also actually get better information. So what we're doing in this paper is trying to suggest that there's another theoretical possibility and then seeing whether this is actually present in the data. So we address three questions. In the context of Ugandan primary education, where the main performance challenge is the teachers aren't present in schools. So if you look at the most recent service delivery indicators across, across Africa, Uganda is the worst performer. And it's around about 30% of teacher days are lost to teacher absenteeism. In our data, it's actually a little bit higher. It's 34% of days in our control group. But this is a staggeringly high number of days that are lost. So the main performance challenge is teacher absenteeism. So what we want to ask is, would paying for locally monitored performance improve education service delivery? I.e., could we get teachers to attend school more often? Moreover, does paying for locally monitored performance improve the information that we collect? Can we get accurate information on whether teachers are present in schools that can then be used by the district education authority to plan the education system? And taking into account both of those margins and the cost of the incentive payments themselves, can we say that overall welfare improves? And the bottom line, and this is using the theory that then guides the field experiment, and then the numbers from the field experiment go into the welfare analysis, the bottom line is pretty optimistic. Yes, paying for locally monitored performance can improve education service delivery. It can improve the quality of information collected. And the scheme that we implemented passes a cost-benefit analysis test even under some very restrictive parameter assumptions. Okay, so I'm hoping to be able to get through all of that, but that's the bottom line of the paper, if I don't. Okay, so theory. I can't possibly go through a theory model and, and all the rest of this. So I did want to kind of tell you some of the ingredients that are there. And if you're interested, I think you'll have to go to the paper. But basically, there's a teacher, there's a head teacher, there are some pupils who don't actually play any strategic role, but we care about their welfare, and a bureaucracy. The teacher chooses whether to attend school at some cost, CT, and that's private information to the teacher. The teacher's attendance at school is valued both by the head teacher and also by the pupils. The head teacher chooses whether to monitor, so the head teacher within the school is the local monitor. And then whether to send a truthful report or not, i.e., if you monitor and see that the teacher is absent, do you actually, in fact, say that the teacher is absent? Or do you lie and say that the teacher is present? If reported absent in the model, we assume the teacher suffers some amount of shame. This isn't hugely important for the analysis. And under the pay-for-performance scheme, the teacher receives a bonus if she is reported present by the local monitor. So the, the reports are taken at face value. So if a head teacher says the teacher is present, that will trigger a bonus payment. And finally, just to model the importance of information, we have a bureaucracy around that collects the information in from the head teacher reports and has to make some kind of decision that's contingent on knowing or getting accurate information. We model that by saying they take a binary policy decision and they suffer some loss if that policy decision doesn't match with the teacher's attendance decision. So basically, if you, if you believe that the teacher is present, you would take an action that, that transfers resources to the school. If you, if you believe the teacher is absent, you wouldn't transfer those resources. So you suffer a loss if you have a mistake and belief, a belief about whether the teacher is present. The bureaucracy's payoff has three components. The bureaucracy cares about the pupils' well-being. So that's the first term here. Okay, this is the total number of pupils times the pupil per pupil benefit. The bureaucracy cares about the money that's transferred to the, the teachers. Okay, the bonus that's paid, that's a direct cost of the scheme. And then there's this decision cost if the bureaucracy makes a mistake. So we've got three things to think about when we're trying to take into account or trying to, to keep track of welfare. Does the teacher attend more often and therefore trigger some pupil benefit? Are bonuses paid out? And is there a mistake triggering a loss in terms of decision-making? What do we get out of the analysis? We, we look at three, three aspects. We look at the teacher's attendance decision. We look at the head teacher's monitoring decision. And we look at the bureaucracy's decision-making. We, the theory predicts that attendance should go up. The theory predicts that reported attendance should go up. And obviously, trivially, if you pay for performance and there is reported attendance, you're going to pay out some money. So the, the bonus paid out goes up. In terms of bureaucracy's decision-making, there are two competing effects. And this depends on the two scenarios that I presented in the introduction. On the one hand, there's the risk of collusion. But on the other hand, there's the possibility of the Coast theorem coming into play and overcoming bargaining failure. And it'll depend on which of those two is more important as to whether the overall decision effect is positive or negative. We have a table that summarizes all of the possible effects and the possible parameter regions at work. There's a picture in the paper that says these. The thing I put the red box around here is really what we see is the contribution of the theory. What the theory is doing here is saying, yes, collusion is possible. There's a region of the parameter space where you get no improvement in teacher attendance. You wind out paying a, you wind up paying a bonus and you make worse decisions. So that's the received wisdom in that region of the parameter space. But there's also two regions of the parameter space where you get the reverse. You get a gain in teacher attendance. In principle, you could get a gain in information. Yes, you have to pay out a bonus. But if you value teacher attendance highly enough and you value the, the, the information that you receive highly enough, there could be an overall welfare gain. So this is what the theory is doing. It's pointing out that there's the possibility of collusion on the one hand, but the possibility of a gain on the other. So that's, that's what the theory delivers. Expected welfare, well, from the point of view ex ante, we have to think about what's likely to happen. This would depend on the main parameters in the model, the cost of the teacher attending school and the cost of the head teacher monitoring. We need to take those into account. And we've got three things to keep track of. The expected total pupil benefit, the expected decision cost, which could be positive or negative from the theory, and the expected payout in terms of the bonus. So what do we do going forwards, given what we've got out of the theory? Well, we conduct a field experiment where we estimate the sign and the magnitude of those three behavioral effects. Does the teacher attend more often when we pay for locally monitored performance? Do we see an improvement in the decisions that the government would take on the basis of the information? And how much money do we spend in terms of bonus payouts? Okay, so we estimate those, those three behavioral effects, the attendance effect, the decision effect, and the bonus payout effect. Then we supplement the field experiment data with the Ugandan National Panel Survey, in particular, data on earnings, to be able to estimate this term. How much gain do pupils get from teachers attending more often? Because we want to get the total expected pupil benefit. And then finally, we use what we actually spend on bonuses, what we've estimated here, to get a comparison. And we ask, does the scheme pass a cost-benefit analysis test under plausible assumptions for what we might lose by making the wrong decision? So that's how we conduct the expected welfare analysis. So what's the field experiment? I have very little time to tell you, but basically, we ran an experiment for a year back in 2012, 2013. We have a control arm where nothing changed. We have an information-only arm where what we did was we asked head teachers to monitor and submit reports, but no money was attached to the monitoring report. So this is a low-stakes environment. And then we had an information and bonus arm where we attached financial incentives to those monitoring reports, where they were taken at face value. Teachers received a bonus of 60,000 Ugandan shillings, which is around about 30% of monthly salary. Okay, so a non-negligible financial bonus. The data that we use comes from three sources. First, the reports that were sent in via SMS. We provided mobile phones to schools so that the head teachers could send in text message monitoring reports. So we have the reported teacher attendance. We also conducted our own independent spot checks because we need to know whether those reports are truthful or not. So we were in the schools monitoring ourselves. And finally, we conducted a school survey. There was, there was no evidence of any imbalance across the treatment arms. I won't go through that right now. So what happened? So here I'm showing you bars which plot the proportion of days on which we have spot checks. So this is the proportion of teacher spot check days. Because we need to be in the schools to be able to say whether the reports are truthful or not. So that's what the height of the bar shows you, a proportion of teacher spot check days. What we find is there's a gain in attendance of eight percentage points when a bonus is paid. We find that reported attendance goes up by 15 percentage points. And we're paying out on around about 60% of reports. So that's the attendance effect and the payout effect. And we needed those two to do the, the welfare calculation. What about the effect on decisions? Here, I'm showing you the proportion of teacher days, teacher spot check days, that the bureaucracy would make a mistake if it was fully rational and Bayesian. Okay, so there's no behavioral economics going on here. We're thinking about the bureaucracy being fully Bayesian. But if it took the reports in and updated in a Bayesian way. What we see is that the height of these bars goes down, moving from the control to the information arm to the information and bonus arm. You make fewer mistakes when you pay financial bonuses. So contrary to the received wisdom, the quality of information that you're getting is better relative to not attaching payment to those local monitoring reports. And this is all being driven by the Coasean logic. So what's the welfare analysis? Marco, I have two minutes? Okay, right. So what's the welfare analysis, stacking all of this up? The way in which we do this is to make note of the fact that not only did teacher attendance improve, but that enrollment rates within treatment schools when we were paying for locally monitored performance went up. So we use the enrollment gain to estimate the welfare gain that pupils will have. In particular, we back out grade attainment. So we, we see that the scheme is stopping pupils from dropping out. So what we do is we say that we assume the scheme is going to contribute to one more year of education by averting dropouts. That's the most conservative assumption you could make. What we do in the second stage is estimate the net present value using data from the Ugandan National Panel Survey of how that grade attainment would translate into earnings. And then using estimates from other papers on the causal estimate, causal effect of schooling on earnings, we get a gain in the net present value that could be attributed to averting dropouts. Okay, and that's how we come up with a financial gain from just the paying for locally monitored performance. And here is the key table. So what I'm showing you here is numbers aggregated for the gain at school level. So this is all of the dropouts that you avert by paying for locally monitored performance aggregated up across all pupils who didn't drop out within a school in the information and bonus arm. Okay, we have a bunch of different assumptions, a bunch of different data sets that we use. But the key thing here is which of these numbers is bigger or smaller than $2,250? Because that's how much the scheme costs within each school. So 2,250 is the cost, the payout effect, the cost of running the scheme. What we need is the pupil, the total expected pupil gain to be greater than that. And then we pass the cost-benefit analysis test even without considering decisions, okay, the impact on information. What we see is for most of these cells, we pass the cost-benefit analysis test even without the decision effect. But for the most extreme parameter assumptions, the most conservative assumptions, in particular where we choose, we discount very heavily, we assume a really small causal estimate of the effect of schooling on earnings, where we use our more conservative data set and so forth, we see we have some red numbers here. So the total expected pupil benefit is less than the financial payout, okay, in terms of the cost. So there, the decision make, the decision effect matters. How much will we need the decision effect to be worth more than $870 per school? Not a huge amount per school. So we think this is a plausible bound on the social value of avoiding information mistakes or policy mistakes. Time for one, one sum-up slide? So what are the concluding remarks? Well, the received wisdom is, and this is being led by people pushing for the use of cameras, CCTV, punch cards, and so forth, is don't rely on human judgment, okay? Local monitors are no good. Paying for locally monitored performance will fail to incentivize behavior and will bias information for planning purposes. In this paper, we present some simple theories. It's just based on the Coast theorem that says that's a possibility, but it's not the only possibility. It could incentivize desired behavior by overcoming bargaining failures and it could improve decision-making. We then show, using data from a field experiment, that this is indeed what happened. The welfare analysis for teacher attendance in Ugandan primary schools shows that it does pass a cost-benefit analysis test. And that's it.
Sorry, I was just wondering, did I read correctly that there was 66% of days when you had spot checks?
So, no, I was showing you that just days that were spot checked. Okay, they were, all of the, all of the bars were on spot check days.
Okay, right.
We were then looking at the proportion of those days with spot checks that the teachers then monitored.
I was wondering if a cost-benefit analysis took into account the cost of the spot checks? Because I'm thinking that in my experience, if you ask head teachers or, you know, whoever, sort of ask to answer a question and then you attach some payment to it, they will expect that, you know, they will be somehow punished if they report not truthfully. And so I was wondering to what extent the improvement in the quality of information may be due to this?
So first, in terms of whether there was a Hawthorne effect in terms of the spot checks actually triggering behavior? Is that what you mean or?
No, sorry. So I suppose there were spot checks across all treatment groups?
Absolutely, and we varied them. We stratified the sample so that we could check for a Hawthorne effect, which there wasn't.
What I was thinking about is that having a spot check when the information that is being checked is attached to a payment may have a different effect on the truthfulness of the report.
If they anticipated that the spot check was going to take place, but...
No, sorry, what I meant is that you may start reporting, taking, basically, the information that you report may start being more truthful if you expect that some payment will be made based on the information that you are providing.
But that's sort of part of this, I mean, that's the intention. Is that if you think that the report is going to trigger a financial bonus, then you would behave differently. That's precisely the point of the scheme, right?
Yes, I think what I had in mind was maybe it was a different story to the Coasean theorem, but we can talk.
Absolutely.
Thanks, Marcos. Glad to see a fantastic turnout today. Thank you all for coming. I'm going to talk about an issue related to why we don't see medical care providers performing the best possible medicine at the frontier of knowledge. An unusual organization. I'm using the slides of one of my co-authors, so. Here, here's the motivating facts. So in healthcare, one of the nice things is we actually have estimates of what the production possibility frontier is by different types of diseases. These are clinical medical practice guidelines. And you can think of quality of care as the clinical content of care when you show up for a visit in terms of what services you receive, whether they're appropriate for the diagnosis and treatment of your illness. Clinical practice guidelines are the, are for specific diseases or conditions, are consensuses of, of providers based on the scientific clinical leaders and adjusted to the local conditions and resources of each country. So this shows the percent or the average share of clinical practice guidelines that you see in a country. So all the way to the right would be one, and then all of these are well within one. Turns out, the best possible care for things like diabetes and asthma is in the United Kingdom. In the US, for simple preventative care or treatment of chronic conditions, we're between 50 and 60%. Rwanda, simple prenatal care, they're only doing 45%. Tanzania for malaria, 24%. And the worst seems to be in this table, the treatment of diarrhea in India, which is kind of funny because that's where the prevalence of diarrhea is probably the highest. So we have lots of production inside the production possibility frontier of really known procedures, things that we know you should do, but, and you're resourced to do, but physicians produce well within that. Okay, I'm going backwards. All right, so this is a general phenomenon we see a lot across a lot of industries. There's been quite a bit of literature which says adoption of new technology and innovation is extremely slow in manufacturing, in agriculture, in medical care. And one of the stories that's come out that people hypothesize is it's really fixed costs of adjustment which inhibits the adoption of productive innovations. So when a new technology or an innovation comes along, you need to design, test, learn how best to incorporate this innovation into production. You may need to purchase complementary technology. There may be management, there's some examples in the cost of learning better management practices. And then there's just simple psychological resistance. Workers who are being paid in part on performance don't want to live through a slowdown period while you're adopting that new technology and they have to learn, so their salaries go down during that period. And it just may be present bias in the adoption of these techniques. I really care about the profits today and less about tomorrow. And there's quite a bit of evidence in healthcare that these things are true. One of the, one of the literatures that talks about why don't we see providers operating at the frontier, well, one is, well, it takes time for them to learn, knowledge to spread out. Yet there's a large literature which says physicians don't know, don't do what they know. So you go in and you ask physicians, what should you do during prenatal care? There are 36 things in the clinical practice guideline, they're providing 24 of them, 20. So physicians are operating, are choosing to operate well within the production possibility frontier based on their own knowledge and ability. And there is some evidence that these types of fixed costs inhibit the adoption of really simple and cost effective strategies. For example, it took 20 years for US hospitals to fully adopt using aspirin in the treatment of cardiac conditions. Not a very expensive technology, not difficult to administer, and a large part of it is explained by the fact that physicians didn't want to change their practice patterns or their habits. A good UK example was about half of the providers in UK hospitals report that old routines, their habits is a barrier to complying with new hand hygiene procedures. So this fixed cost story as to why we don't see adoption could be contrasted against another one, which is, well, maybe providers just don't believe this new technology or these extra things are valuable, even though all those experts put it in the clinical practice guideline. I'm a doctor, no one can tell me what to do, and I don't believe aspirin or washing my hands is important. So it's a belief about the productivity or the health benefit of these things. And we're going to try and sort out these two alternative explanations. All right, so what are we going to look at? Is the non-adoption of best practice medicine, I'm going to set out two examples, there may be other, which is it's a low perceived value. Either I don't think I'm going to make more money by adopting it, or I just don't think it's really important for patient health versus something that I think is really valuable and maybe I can make money on, but there are large fixed costs of adjustment, large barriers of adoption. Okay, so the way we're going to look at that is we're going to use a temporary financial incentive and we're going to raise the price of doing something substantially. And if it's low perceived value, what will we expect is physicians to, or clinics to start to adopt that practice? And when I drop the incentive back down, they'll stop doing it. If it's high perceived value and there are large fixed costs of adjustment, if that temporary fee compensates for the cost of adjustment, well, we should see them adopt the new practice. And then after the fee disappears, they should continue to provide care at that higher quality of care. So that's basically the thought experiment we're going to do. We have a little model in the paper and the model says this, if the net present value of adopting the, adopting the procedure is bigger than the fixed cost, I'm gonna, I'm gonna adopt. And in the second case, in this case of high perceived value and high fixed cost, I have a positive return to the activity absent the fixed costs, but because maybe I have huge present bias or those fixed costs are high, the net present value is just less than that. Okay. All right, so again, we're going to disentangle these two using the, the cost incentive. And why is this interesting from a policy point of view? Well, if, there's a lot of literature in healthcare right now which says we have to shift to performance incentives in order to get better quality of care. So the pay for performance or the, what do they call it in the world back, resource-based financing? And the thought there in resource-based financing or pay for performance is physicians have low perceived value of these procedures or treating these patients. So by raising the price, people are going, physicians are going to smoothly reallocate their time into, into this activity. And so if that's true, then in order to get higher quality of care, we have to have a permanent fee increase, and that increases the recurrent budgets of whoever the financing authority is. If it's really this fixed cost of adoption, then we can get the same return with just a temporary fee and it's a much more cost effective policy. Okay, so, uh, let's see. So what do we do? We're going to, we do this experiment, we're going to run a randomized trial, it's become fashionable in this millennium. And we're going to go into Argentina, working with public healthcare clinics. And the, the particular thing we're interested in is getting pregnant women to get their first prenatal visit in the first trimester. Okay, so what we do is we raise the fee paid for the first prenatal care visit by 200% if it's during the first trimester. And we do that for eight months. And what we're going to see is that during that eight month period, the share or that clinics, treatment clinics are able to raise the share of women who come in early by over a third, 34%. The fees are removed after eight months and that level persists for at least 24 months afterward. And what we're going to show is we're going to do some analysis as to the mechanisms by which healthcare clinics were able to do that. And what they do is they test and develop a whole bunch of data-driven strategies to identify which of their beneficiaries, which of the people who are attached to their clinic are likely to be pregnant, it's women. And then when they identify likely pregnant women, they, or women who are more likely to be pregnant, they give them a home pregnancy test. If they're pregnant, pregnant, they encourage them to come in. And so the fixed costs, we're testing and developing these strategies and later on I will talk about a bunch of them. All right, 10 minutes, okay. And then, then I'll also, so we'll show that. And then one of the other things I'll show is, is that providers ex ante thought that early initiation of prenatal care was medically valuable and that the prenatal care visits and the increased outreach activities to identify women and bring them in were profitable. So the condition which is, this is something they would have liked to do both for monetary reasons and for health reasons if there weren't fixed costs. We show that when we provide the incentive, that they invest a lot in innovative strategies to identify pregnant women and bring them in. And we think we're going to conclude that really it's high fixed costs which prevent providers from adopting better practices. All right, so let me race through everything else. All right, so this is, this is a field experiment with Plan Nacer in Argentina. This is a program that's been in existence since 2005, five years before the program. Plan Nacer trans, the, this program pays clinics for the treatment of their beneficiaries. Beneficiaries are assigned to a particular clinic, so they can't go to other clinics, they can only go to the clinic they're, they're assigned to. And Plan Nacer pays these clinics a fee for providing different services to each of the beneficiaries, and that fee is on top of their government given budgets. It's like God given budgets, but in Argentina that doesn't work. So this is top up money and half of that money for prenatal care can be put in the physician's project. So if I get pocket, so I get more prenatal care, I'm making money. It goes right in, in their pocket. Okay, all right, so, um, let's skip all that. So, all right, so here's the, the intervention at baseline. So 16 months of data baseline for all prenatal care visits, they're paid 40 Argentine pesos, both in the treatment group. During the eight month intervention period, we triple that to 120, and then after that it reverts to the original schedule. I'll skip this, there's some non-compliance, so we'll end up doing late estimators rather than intent to treat. All right, the data are administrative data from all of our clinics. We have data on every pregnancy. In the medical records, we have the date of the first visit and during that visit they collect the date of the last menstruation. And from that we'll know whether it's in the first trimester or not. We have for the same women, another measurement which is during the delivery, the attending physician physically measures gestational age, which is a second way of measuring the date of the first visit or the weeks pregnant during the first visit. This is a slide, I'll use the method of proof by intimidation to assert there's no reporting bias. And then here is another representation of this. During the pre-intervention period, we'll have 16 months worth of births in prenatal care. The intervention period is eight months. And we have two post-intervention periods. Post-intervention period one where the prenatal care visit data is measured in the same way and a second additional nine months where it's measurement differently, so we end up with different point estimates. I won't go into exactly why it's fuzzier during that period. And then we can attach some birth outcome data. All right, results. So these are the densities of the week at which the woman was pregnant during the time of her first prenatal care visit. The solid line is the density for the treatment group, the dash line for the control group. These lay on top of each other and the Kamalgorov Smirnov test confirmed that. This is during the pregnancy period, the treatment distribution shifts to the left. We've got a big increase in mass below 13 weeks and that shift is significant. This is the first post-intervention period, it continues. This is the second post-intervention period and it continues as well. Okay, that just says we're going to compare means and adjust the standard errors appropriately. Now, here are some of the point estimates for the weeks pregnant at the time of the first visit. During the pre-intervention period, the average is about 17 and a half weeks and there's no difference between the treatment and control group. During the intervention period, we see the treatment group starts about a week and a half earlier and that's significant. And in the post-intervention period, we got about the same effect and that's significant as well. And one of the reasons I wanted to show it to you this way is you see that gap is the same six months after, 12 months after and 15 months after. So we don't see a significant effect, but it different, it, but it fall, but it decline, the gap declining. That gap is constant over the whole period. Here are the point estimates and I just want you to look at panel B below. This is the share of women who got their first prenatal care visit before week 13, which triggered the payment. It's 11 percentage points higher for the treatment group during the intervention period, eight in the, in the, in that first post-intervention period and eight in the second. So we see that these treatment effects are large, a third during the treatment period, and that same order of magnitude essentially persists for 24 months after. Okay, so now we want to get at, why did this happen? And the first thing we're going to look at, now what we want to do is establish the mechanisms and the value of early initiation of care. Let's see, all right, so. All right, so let's talk about the mechanisms. How did the clinics do this? Well, first of all, they have these outreach activities. So I've got a captive group of beneficiaries who have to come to my clinic. And I have essentially medical student or nursing student interns who work for me very cheaply, and they're going out and doing outreach activities anyway to remind them of all the nutrition, all of the types of things that Nava talked about, that community health workers do. The clinics in Argentina use these medical interns about the same way. So it also turns out that Plan Nacer reimburses clinics or pays clinics for outreach activities. And if I send a medical intern out, they do so many outreach activities in an hour, Plan Nacer reimburses them at a profitable rate. So if they do more outreach activities, they're going to make a little bit of money. All right, so what did Plan Nacer do? We interviewed a bunch of these treatment clinics and all of them said the first thing we did was we got all of our doctors and nurses together and we brainstormed, how could we make this happen? And it turns out they all experimented with a bunch of different activities and most of them were data driven. So one that they came up with was they realized they provide family planning services to their beneficiaries and they have records as to whether women refill their pills on time or not. So they got data from the pharmacies, they had to set up a data system where the pharmacy reported back, Mrs. Marcos was late. So what Plan Nacer would do is say, okay, I'm going to send a community health worker to Marcos's house, interview his wife and say, when was the last time you had your menstruation? Oh, it was quite a while ago. Here, here's a home pregnancy test. If she was pregnant, then they would encourage her to come in. Another activity was in looking at the data, they realized that, that women who recently gave birth the first time are likely to have a second child very quickly. So what they did was they said, we distribute free milk to women, so we're going to start sending our community outreach staff to the milk distribution centers and interview women in the same way there because it's a higher likelihood they're pregnant than, than other women. They did a bunch of things like this. All of those strategies needed to be thought of, needed to be tested, they needed to look through the data. We call those the fixed costs of, of, of this new activity. And then the new activities were finding these women and bringing them in. Okay, and here's some data on those outreach activities. If you look at the right panel, this is the median. If you look at the right panel, this is the median number of outreach activities in the pre-intervention period, there's no difference between treatment and control groups. During the intervention period, it doubles in treatment periods, and that difference persists in the post-intervention period, all right? Then we wanted to look at, how important was it? So one of the, there may not have been fixed costs of adjustment. It may have been, once I start paying for it, I make it more salient to the treatment groups. So, so one story is, it wasn't the fixed cost of adjustment. It was all of a sudden, even though they knew prenatal care, they were taught prenatal care was important, the money made it more salient. So here's some data which shows, this is the absolute value of a bunch of prenatal care services between treatment and control groups. The red box is the first prenatal care visit before week 13. That is what, the thing they score the highest on, and it's equal for treatment and control. This is relative ranking, one through seven of the most important. Again, prenatal care visit is always ranked the highest, and it's equal for treatment and control, okay? There's no spillover into other activities. This literature seems to think that you have a single doctor who has to allocate their time. So if you pay them to do something, they're less likely to do something else. But if you're a clinic, you can always hire more people and invest in all activities. Whether there's positive or negative spillover depends on whether there are complements or substitutes in the cost function, and the production function. Birth weight, there are no effects on birth weight, even though we get more women to come in. Why don't we find birth weight effects? Well, one, these are pretty well, these are real zero effects. It's not we're finding large effects, which are imprecisely estimated, these are pretty small. So why doesn't early initiation of care matter in this, in this dataset? One is, it could be early initiation of care doesn't matter that all of the medical literature is wrong, right? We economists know much better than the, the medical literature. And we're very good about telling other people that we think their discipline is wrong. Two, we could be underpowered, right? The last one, though, is the one I have a little bit more confidence in, which is, when you provide this incentive, you get, the clinicians are going to go after the women who are just on the edge of going. So in fact, you saw that we, it would, on average, it increased, it reduced the average weeks pregnant by a week and a half. And so what they were doing is, they were shifting most of the women from the second trimester into the first trimester. Not the real at-risk women who wouldn't start till the third trimester, or there was a problem. And so the incentives didn't really, didn't really work for high-risk women. It worked for what we think are low-risk women, and that may not have translated into better healthcare. So, final remarks. We find that paying temporary incentives led to a really large increase in early initiation of care. And that lasted 24 months, not months, 24 months. And the temporary incentives, we think of as like a nudge to innovation, to get over either the true or psychological fixed costs of adoption. In fact, these incentives got them to develop and test really innovative data-driven strategies to go out and find these women and bring them in. And what it suggests is, that we also find that in the absence of these fixed costs, the providers believed it was medically necessary, that it was profitable, and it's something they would have done if they didn't have these fixed costs of adjustment. So this suggests that the fixed cost story is likely driving low adoption of better medical practice as opposed to low, low value. We also find, as I said before, we don't see improvements in birth weight. And what this says is, what I'd like to do is provide an incentive which is conditional on the risk of the woman, but that's not observable and hence not contractable. So for this particular condition, the improvement in the, in the services didn't translate into health outcomes. That will be easier or harder for different types of procedures, depending on the distribution of high risk in, in the, in the patient populations. Policy, well, what this suggests is, all of that literature, which is finding improvements in quality and health outcomes from changing pay for performance. Well, maybe it's not something we have to keep in forever. Maybe they are just moving from one steady state to another. And a temporary incentive will nudge it that into, into that. And we can get a much, a much more cheaper way to improve the performance of the healthcare sector. And I'm done. I think you are, you're clear. The mothers? In Argentina, it's not a credit constraint, this is not. This is a, this is like, the payment for all services under Plan Nacer is like a 5% increase in your budget. This is, has a trivial effect on your budget. So it's not alleviating credit constraints in, in a meaningful way.
I wonder, what is your feeling about the external validity of this experiment? In the sense that this is in a way, the, I think it's a low fixed cost new technology, you know?
Well, so let's see, where is this? I'm sorry. That allows me to, let's see. Ah, there we go. So where was this study done? Go to the United States, turn left, go as far as you can, and you hit Argentina. And then go to the top corner of Argentina. This is not representative of much of the world, right? So external validity, and it's 37 clinics that were randomly sampled out of this very poor province. So I think of this as a proof-of-concept study. What in the medical literature, they would call it an efficacy study rather than effectiveness study. And so we're actually replicating this with a bunch of other services all over Argentina right now to go to, go to the next step. So what is external validity? If it really is trying the same thing in a variety of situations until you find something that is quite stable across economies and cultures and technologies? This is not externally valid at this point. Does that help you? Normally, we don't admit that, we kind of dance a little bit, but absolutely.
Good, honest answer.
Yeah, 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 well, none of you are the referees, all right.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, you're the chairman. Okay, all right, so it's going to be short, right? So in this short presentation, I'm going to tell you about some of the results, not all, just some of the results, from a large experiment we're working on for over three years now with the World Bank and the government from Nigeria. And for which, we're now collecting the final round of data, finally. So, this doesn't, okay. So after the three of the presentations today, we know for sure that there is growing interest in literature on incentives, on the effect of incentives on public sector and non-for-profit work, right? So at this stage in the afternoon, two notes only. So note number one, there is a big body of literature on payment for performance, actually, a lot of work by Paul, from Rwanda to Argentina, on the long term, on the short run. The same applies to incentives, financial incentives to teachers. So in Mexico, in India, a number of places. Recently, I'm thinking about a paper called "No Margin, No Mission?", question mark. I mean, raises the issue that in the, actually, in some situations, it's not just money that, that matters. Non-monetary incentives can actually be more effective than monetary ones in eliciting effort. Point number two, again, looking at the same body of literature, what we see is that incentives sometimes have a desired effect. Sometimes they don't work, sometimes they could even backfire. For example, in the "No Margin, No Mission" paper, non-monetary incentives have a great effect. Financial incentives do not. Now, given this, and to make sense of this evidence, it's crucial that we understand a little bit better the channels through which incentives affect effort, right? And in terms of this, the literature, the theoretical literature is, is very rich, very rich in hypotheses, right? So this paper I'm presenting today, just part of the results, is not about whether incentives work or don't or not, it's about testing the theory. So testing the theory, the theoretical hypothesis, for why incentives can work, can fail to work, and can even backfire. Let me tell you of a few, a few theories, right? So the theory says that incentives, well, the, the theory says that incentives, they carry vital information about the job, right? For example, if you need to pay me more for me to work harder, or if you need to give me a medal, so maybe the job is harder than I thought, maybe the workload is heavier than I thought, maybe the manager is going to be happier on me. Second, a lot of work, theoretical work by fair, partially validated lab experiments, shows that there is an issue of reciprocity. So if I'm given incentives, so I may feel that my, my employers are actually supporting me more. And that could be one of the reasons why I'm going to work harder to then reciprocate that support. Third, there is a big theoretical literature on the effect of incentives on what is called here, social norms. So we're not talking about the norms that rule society in this case. We're talking about the perception of what is socially appropriate by the incentivized workers. This could go either ways, right? So on the one hand, I could say, so now I'm given incentives, right? So for example, to stay longer at the job. So I assume that, that is what is socially appropriate to do. It could go, go completely the other way. So I could say, well, now if I decide to leave earlier, right? I do that at the expense of sacrificing my own incentives. So I'm leaving money on the table, so I'm justified, before I wasn't justified, now I am. A fourth, a channel for incentives to work or fail to work, that has to do with the image motivation, right? As we saw in, in Nava's paper. One reason why people may engage in these missions is to say, well, I want to be seen as doing good, someone who does good for society. Now, if my colleagues see me receiving money for that, well, then that public signal is lost, right? And so the incentives can fail to work, or even, even backtrack. So today, we're going to talk, I'm going to show you evidence more on these three first hypotheses. I'm going to say something just about the last one, how do we do this, right? So we do this in the context of a large policy intervention in Nigeria. We've been working with the federal government of Nigeria for now for three years. Nigeria still has one of the highest rates of maternal mortality in the world. This is associated with short supply of midwives, and also some substandard healthcare infrastructure. The Nigerian government decided to do what, something that is pretty much the converse of what we saw in Nava's paper. So the Nigerian government recruited fully trained, fully qualified midwives, trained them briefly, and deployed them to needy areas throughout the whole country. So throughout the 36 Nigerian states, including the capital. Now, this, despite the upgrading of facilities that is then for them to be able to do their jobs, we know that they're going to find very harsh conditions from previous programs on which we worked. And so we know that, as long as missions go, this is quite a mission. And so retention is vital and extremely challenging. And so to stimulate retention, to promote retention, the government is giving monetary incentives. I'm going to explain what they are, non-monetary incentives and combinations of both. So because this paper is presented after Nava's paper, I mean, we have to show this slide. So in Nava's paper, everything happens through selection. That's exactly what we want to, to examine, right? Is how selection can then induce changes in behavior. In our paper, the opposite happens, there is no selection effect, because midwives only know about incentives when they're already hired and deployed, when they're interviewed at baseline, straight after deployment. Second, I mean, the kind of advert we show, I'm not expecting you to read this. I mean, I think it's quite neutral in, in terms of appealing to intrinsic or extrinsically motivated people, right? It doesn't say, work for us, you're going to save the world. It doesn't say, come work for us, you're going to be rich, right? It just says, if you have the qualifications, you can apply. So who are these midwives? As you see here, so the vast majority of midwives are very young, very young women with very little training, sorry, very little experience. They're fully qualified, one year of training, two years, three years. There are also some midwives who are retired and that come back to engage on this mission. That's why the average goes up to 9.6 years. And as I told you, they're going to find quite a difficult mission, right? So asked whether the place where they were deployed to was more rural than where they grew up. They did primary schooling, so the vast majority of them find it more rural. The difference would be even bigger if we compared this with the place where they live, because they all went to midwifery schools, were in urban centers. So they're used to urban living to some extent. You put this together to the fact, with the fact that many of them are going to work in a place where they are, most people are from a different ethnic group and religion, and you see that this is indeed a mission that is difficult. What is our study design? So what you randomize is the incentives, right? So first of all, it's very simple. So what we have is, a group gets monetary incentives. I'm going to explain that in a second, what they are. Other groups, another group gets non-monetary incentives. A third one, because we want to know whether they could be complements, gets both. And the control group gets nothing, right? Notes on this, so midwives are interviewed at baseline, they learn about the incentives at baseline. They are interviewed later, those who stay and those who go. We did some detective work to find people working in fields, in shops, in private clinics. The other thing is, midwives, midwives like to talk, right? So in, in the context of the Nigerian healthcare system, typically, well, each, each group of four primary health centers is linked, refers patients to the same hospital. So at least in a professional capacity, it's, it's possible that midwives who work in each of these, they did talk to each other, right? So and then, as we're giving incentives, if midwives who get the incentives talk to some who don't, right? That might prompt resentful demoralization in those, right? And that could compromise the validity of the study. So what we did here was radical, we're not going to randomize at the midwife level, or even at the PhD level, we randomized the whole cluster. We end up working with 125 clusters. What else? What are the monetary incentives, and how did we get to this monetary incentive? So rather than assuming that we kind of know what should work, what we did here was, we did focus group discussion meetings with midwives of different degrees of seniority. They're not in the study. And we asked them what kind, what level of monetary incentives would help you to stay in the workplace? What we're stimulating here is retention. So I mean, the values given in these meetings go from 10 to 40. The median salary of a midwife is 40,000. In the discussion meetings, the median of all the suggestions was 30, so we went for this value. The way this works is very simple. So let's suppose a midwife joins in, in January, right? So if she stays for three months in a row, in March, she gets an extra 30,000 naira. So we talked about the quite high, high-powered incentive, right? So if, if a median salary is 40,000. If they stay for another three months, they get another bunch of 30,000. If they live in the between, well, they, they don't get the incentive, right? So there is no terminal condition to avoid anticipation effects. In addition, the, the program was open-ended anyway. So what about the non-monetary ones, right? So the non-monetary ones, we did focus group discussion meetings with the same midwives again. And the, the story was more, I mean, what non-monetary incentives would encourage this type of retention? They say, well, give me a jeep, right? And you can't give a jeep, because that's a payment in kind. So then what, right? So then they discussed, this is recorded, they voted, right? And for the most popular options, what happens is, we gave them pen and paper. So this is, these are sketches of special uniforms for midwives that were desired by people in different states, right? And then we procured according to specifications. So interestingly, these, these incentives include a special uniform. They include a personalized work calendar, that also works as, as a picture frame. It includes a work log, and then a super special incentive as well, uniform in the end. So again, the way this is given, these incentives are given, is exactly the same as before. So after three months, if they stay, they get the uniform, if they don't, they don't. If they stay another three months, then they get the calendar, and so on. And for the group that has both types of incentives, it's exactly the same. With the only difference that if they stay for three months, now they get what? They get 30,000 plus the uniform. If they stay for another three, 30,000 plus the calendar, and so on, right? Okay, so we do the questionnaire, the baseline questionnaire with midwives. We collect obviously the, all the usual things about the background, the people they know in the community, et cetera, et cetera. And we play some games incentivized with real men. And we play some games incentivized with real money, precisely to test the theory, right? So we talked about image motivation, for example. So what we do here is, so there is a dictator game, so we give the midwives a tablet, right, and we give them real money, so 2,000 naira, which is good money, I mean, in this context. And we say, you can split it between you and the Red Cross or Red Crescent as you want, right, and nobody will know what this split will be. You do it, there is a cursor, you put the finger to the left, you get the money. After that, or before that, depending on which midwife, so we say, well, we're going to play the same game, but now it's public, right? We give you another 2,000 naira, but the result of the way you split this is announced to all your colleagues by the numerator, right? So in our, the idea is, the difference between what people do in public and in private will tell us what they care about, their image, and how important this is, right? Well, then after this, there is a break, and this is a key point, right? There is a break, and there you see a video, right? This video is with Dr. Hugo Colley, who is the program director, and the respected figurehead in primary healthcare in Nigeria. And she explains to the control group, this says, thank you very much for enrolling, we thank you for this, all the best, best luck. To the ones in the monetary group, they say the same thing, but she adds, we're introducing a system of encouragements, while you now receive 30,000 if you stay three months, and explains this, the same goes for non-monetary, and the same goes for both incentives, right? After this, the questionnaire progresses, and at some point, we've got some post-incentive, post-incentive questions, which are exactly the ones that coincides with the theory we want to test. So, from now on, for example, do you expect the workload to be higher or lower? Do you expect your manager to be tougher on you or less? Things that are not from the theory but from empirics, do you expect a cooperation with people, with colleagues that receive incentives, staying the same, improving, deteriorating, with colleagues who don't receive incentives at all? Do you feel supported, that idea of reciprocity, for example? Finally, to test the issue of social norms, which is key here, we play another game incentivized with real money, so now the ideas are following. So, midwives are given a vignette, a hypothetical situation about Jamila, and they're told, well, Jamila joined the same program as you, and gets the same package that you're receiving, right? So the idea is not to say what you think about her, you're going to try to guess what is the most prevalent view amongst your midwife, your colleague midwives, about, so she enrolled, and after two months, she left. Is this socially appropriate, socially inappropriate? What do you think your colleagues believe, right? And what if it's five months? What if after seven months, and we go all the way to 24 months? So one of these rounds is played for real, and if they guess what is the most prevalent view, what is called here the social norm, right, and they get another prize. In terms of the model, I'm going to skip through this, it's very simple, so we've got, it's a randomized study, so dependent variable of interest on the left-hand side, three arms, monetary, non-monetary, and both. We control for midwife-specific covariates, primary health center covariates that we elicit, and for community-specific covariates as well, so we have questionnaires with the head of all primary health center, heads of primary health centers, and leaders of the community. What do we get in terms of results? Okay, so the theory says that incentives carry information, right? So they're all the same, the midwives, this is random, some of them saw the video that announced the incentives, and I should have explained, also were given a contract that is legally binding, that they signed and entitled them to the incentives. So now, in the future, do we expect working hours to go up? We see a big and statistically significant effect for all types of incentives between 10 and 15 percentage points over control. Will the manager be more demanding? The theory is right again, right? So we see that everybody who gets incentives believes that now, the managers are going to be more demanding, and the magnitude of the effect is again, big and significant at all levels. What about cooperation with other midwives, your colleagues? Do you think that will change? As we see in some empirical papers being hypothesized, no effect at all, no difference between treatment and control. What about with colleagues who don't get any incentives whatsoever? That there could be conflict there. There could, but that doesn't seem to be the case, right? So, no difference between treatment and control, small coefficients. What about the community? Will the community appreciate you more? I mean, see that the control group has an idea that the community already appreciates their work, which is consistent with this type of methods, but in terms of effect of monetary, non-monetary incentives or both, we see nothing there. How about enjoying living in the community more? Now we see that those that are associated with money, midwives think that they will enjoy more, perhaps because of an income effect, right? So this is very significant, this is barely, but the effect is big. How about reciprocity? We see that, so the question is, do you feel that your employment supports you well, adequately? This is confidential, the employment, we never know, the employer will never know. We see interestingly that everything that involves money has a strong effect, right? So we elicit this reciprocity, feeling that the theory predicts the same doesn't happen for the non-monetary incentives, although they were very tailored to this type of midwives. Very finally, we have the story of the social norms. So what we have here on the left-hand side is the minimum acceptable length of service, so midwives guess what that will be. Again, the same story. If the incentives involve money, either separately or jointly with non-monetary incentives, we see an effect of about one and a half months over control, statistically significant at any same level. So, the theory is right. Incentives carry incentives, and all the rest is right too. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. So, I think I want to leave here, because we're at the risk of losing the...
Listen.
Yeah? Okay.
We incentivized the buses as well.
So maybe, one question? I think it's been a long day. I really want to thank the speakers for putting so much fun in so little time. Thank you very much.
Thank you for inviting.